Welcome to Conifer Area Council's November 15, 2023 Town Hall Meeting. And thank you so much for being here. This is a great turnout. A very, very special thanks to CORE Electric Cooperative for their community support of tonight's meeting, and also to Kristi and Tiffany with RE/MAX Alliance for their community support of tonight's meeting. And then we also have water in the back that has been provided by Jazzercise. So, thank you to them. We have just a great turnout, so thank you, everybody. A link will be available probably tomorrow if you'd like to watch the meeting again, or for anybody that was not here. It'll be sent out in an email, and if you are not on our email list, you want to get on that because we do have a lot of important community information that goes out in that email. So our speakers tonight have been asked to present just the facts, not in support of or opposition to any development, candidate, business, anything. So they will do that. And most of you have been here many times, but just in case there are no questions and no comments during the presentations, and then at 8:00, when we're finished with the presentations, you're welcome to go up and talk to... There's lots of tables here with lots of information, so go talk to the presenters and the people that are at the tables with information. So, what's going on around here? Has your homeowner's insurance been canceled? Anybody? Mine was, which was a surprise. And Bobby Baca, Director of Property Casualty and Title, is here tonight. She is with the Department of Regulatory Agencies to help us navigate the waters in our quest for property insurance information. Bobby.
Thank you, and thank you for having me back again. I think this is the third or fourth time I've been here, so I feel like the Division of Insurance is a regular now. So as Shirley mentioned, homeowners in certain areas, homeowner policies are being non-renewed. And... So, the current landscape, homeowner insurers are updating their new business underwriting criteria. A lot of insurers, a handful of insurers are kind of steering away from the very high wildfire risk areas. Some insurers are non-renewing in the high wildfire risk areas, as well as the entire state. We've had a few companies actually withdraw from the state entirely, although they're smaller companies with lesser amounts of coverage. And then if the companies are insuring, premiums are going up. So what can you do if you still have your insurance and you haven't received a non-renewal notice? You'll want to kind of keep an eye on it, look for your renewal notice, or I should say a non-renewal notice, within 60 to 90 days of your renewal date. The law was recently changed that requires companies notify you at least 60 days in advance, when prior it was 30 days in advance. Address any concerns your carrier may have. Sometimes carriers will reach out to you and say, you know, they've inspected your property and they want this, this, and this done, or they want you to mitigate, you know, to, you know, create defensible space up to 30 feet or something. Do what they ask because that'll improve your chances of them renewing your policy. Don't let your policies lapse. If you're paying your premium and it's not coming out of your mortgage payment, make sure you're getting that payment paid because if it cancels for non-payment, it's unlikely the company would reinstate the policy. And contact your agent if you make any changes to your home, whether you're remodeling or you've done something, you've done the mitigation, you've created that defensible space, let your agent and your company know so that they're aware when they're underwriting that renewal. So mitigation, risk reduction, what can you do? You can request a home assessment. I know Jefferson County offers, can't remember the name of it, but I know they offer where people come out and they will inspect your property and they'll give you ideas of how to mitigate and create defensible space. Hardscape, zero escaping, I don't know how much of that you guys would do here because I don't know if you guys have fawns and that kind of things, but zero escaping helps. Window and vent protection, and if you put screens over your vents where the air can still flow through but embers can't get through, that helps prevent a fire. And then regular maintenance and upkeep, obviously, is a big one for insurance companies. So if you're shopping for insurance, this first category is, you know, if you can, stay put, right? I mean, insurance companies are increasing premiums, you may have longevity discounts, you might have other things available to you that you wouldn't have if you went to a new insurance company. And look at bundling. If you have your home with State Farm and you have your auto with another company, see if you can move your auto to State Farm to create that spread of risk. Companies like to have all of the business rather than just one piece of it. There's a couple of different types of companies and agency systems. There's the captive agency system, which the captive agents are typically limited to one market. They're like a State Farm agent or a farmer's agent, they're considered captive. Or there's independent brokers. The thing with independent brokers is they typically have more markets to help, to look for coverage for you. So instead of searching the one company, they might have three or four. And then they also have access to the surplus lines. And I'm not saying that the captives don't have access to it, but the independent brokers, it seems that they have a little bit more access. And then I included some resources in here. And the Division of Insurance is a resource. We have a premium comparison guide on our website that you can access to see who is writing and what are the premiums look like. And we've, right now, the data is still 2022. We are in the process of getting the 2023 loaded, and waiting on OIT is always a challenge, but we are waiting, we are trying to get that done. And that'll tell you if the company is writing in this area. We have, I think we have three different coverage amounts, I think ranging from, I think it's like $507,500 or $307,500, $507,500, I'm sorry. And then the Professional Independent Insurance Agents of Colorado, PAIC, they have been a very useful resource for those who cannot find coverage in the admitted market. So they are aware of brokers throughout the state, whether it's Jefferson County or, you know, the Conifer Area or Evergreen or Park County. They can help locate coverage or a broker that can help place the coverage. So, I know last time we were here, we kind of talked a little bit about what the Division of Insurance is doing, and the Commissioner was here about a year ago kind of talking about what we've been doing. So 2023, we had the Fair Plan Bill was passed. This is going to be an insurer of last resort. It is currently, the Board was required to be seated by January 1 of 2024. The Governor appoints the Board. It is already seated. We've already interviewed and appointed Board members, so they are already beginning to do the work they need to do, but it will be a long process. So we anticipate a company and a fair plan policy to be, hopefully, early 2025, maybe We had House Bill 231174, thank you to Senator Basely, which is, requires the insurance, or the Division to do an affordability study and a reconstruction study. We are working on that. And also, that's also the bill, I believe, that changed the renewal requirements from 30 days to 60 days. And then House Bill 221111 set forth some additional claim requirements, claim handling requirements on the companies. And then we'd also require the Division to issue, all right, Division to issue a regulation streamlining of inventory process if you do have a total loss. We've been doing stakeholder meetings. We've had three of them so far. We may have another one. Those meetings are on our website, and here's our contact information. I apologize for going over a little bit. I really thought I was talking too fast, so if you guys have any questions, we'll be at this table over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. So next, we have Chiefs Sherla and Ware, and they're going to be talking about what now, since consolidation did not pass.
Thank you, Shirley. Good evening. So, obviously, everybody I'm sure here knows that we had a recent election, and although the election did not go our way, we learned some tremendous lessons through this process. First, we learned what incredible support we have from our community, and we thank you tremendously for that. There was an outpouring of support and communication through this process. Secondly, what we learned is how well our fire departments worked together. We have been working for three to four years, building programs, showing how we can absolutely solve our problems together. We are not out of the woods at all. We still are going to move forward. The general message we want to let everybody know is this was a bump in the road, and we will continue to move forward and look for answers for the problems that we face. We're going to regroup and look at options that we have, but we really wanted to come here tonight and just let you know that nothing's going to change. We will continue to give you the best service that we absolutely can, that we will not stop, that we will continue to look for the answer moving forward, and we are very positive about who we are, working together, and what our future looks like. I want to turn it over to Chief Ware, he's going to have a few more specifics for it, but thank you all. Just keep what I said.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jacob Ware, the Chief at Elk Creek. What I wanted to say first off is thanks, everybody in our district, for voting to allow us to keep our two-and-a-half mills. We have a sunsetting mill levy, and it was going to be a challenge. If that did sunset, it was going to, it was going to put a hitch in our giddyup, if you will. We've been saving up for this time. We've been putting off a few capital purchases to see where this landed, but thanks to everybody, it did pass with an overwhelming number, so that was very exciting. What we're going to be able to do with that is we're going to start being, we're going to replace some large apparatus, we're going to make some big capital purchases. We've got a couple of fire engines that are north of 20 years old. They're time to retire, we're going to be able to replace those. We're also going to replace maging ambulances. And to echo what Chief Sherla said, we're going to continue working together. We are stronger together. We are, our programs, the Conifer Wildlife Division, that was our proof of concept, and while this may not have been the right time to do this, we're going to continue to work together, we're going to continue to provide the same services we have, and we're going to move forward. We do believe that working together is the way we're going to solve our response problem. We just need to figure out the right path to get there. So that's all I got. Thanks, everybody. We'll be around afterwards for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have Kat, Public Services Manager for the Mountain Libraries. She's going to talk a little bit, I think, about the progress on the standalone Conifer Public Library and also what is going on at the Conifer Library.
So again, my name is Kathla Fevere. I am now the actual manager of the Mountain Libraries. I was just interim last time I came and talked to you all, so now you're stuck with me for a while. First of all, I have to brag about all the fantastic things that are going on at the Conifer Library. Hopefully, you all had a chance to stop in and attend some of those programs or check out a book, see what's there. If you haven't, I encourage you to come. As far as the visibility of the library goes, we are working on painting some libraries, some of the library logo into some of the parking spaces to make it a little bit more clear that that is a library space when the school's not in session. So hopefully that will, we've heard a lot of feedback from the community that parking is sometimes an issue, so hopefully this will help out with that. So thank you for your support on that. As far as the building project, keep an eye on the webpage for that. You can go to JeffersonCountyLibrary.org/Conifer, uh, forward slash opportunity, sorry, Conifer- dash opportunity there. So there are a lot of stuff there. And we are continuing to move forward on looking for another location. So if you have any, you know, one of the things we're relying on is you all, because you all know this community, you know the ins and outs, you know what's available out there, so we are looking for your input on that. We're really grateful to have any input and any ideas you have for what might make a great library location. Unfortunately, this time I do not have a timeline on this, and the reason we're not really giving out a timeline is because there are so many unknowns still. We are counting on finding a different location rather than building. That's what you all said you wanted. We really want to respect that. So we have, what we're doing now is looking for, we're starting the process of looking for the ideal space. So, and again, you all know what that space might be. So if you have any thoughts on that or any ideas, feel free to contact me. I'll leave some of my business cards in the back. And we're always willing to talk if you have any ideas or suggestions. I'm around. I'm not always up here, but you're always welcome to email me or call me. So that's it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kat. And now we have Beth Schneider, Director of the Conifer Chamber, Conifer Area Chamber of Commerce. They have so much going on, so much exciting stuff, so hopefully we'll see you at all the stuff after she talks about it. Thank you. Okay, so we have been working really hard on some really fantastic community events that are coming up. This Friday and Saturday is the Festival of Trees, which is at the Evergreen, the barn at Evergreen Memorial Park. And there's a lot of factors, like a lot of things happening with this event. Friday from 5 to 7, it's open to the public with viewing of these beautifully decorated trees that are going to be auctioned at the end of the weekend, as well as there's a competition, so you can come and vote on your favorite tree. Santa is going to be there. We've got some really fantastic entertainment activities for the kids, and most importantly, we're doing this asylum auction with the Conifer Area Council. So there's, it's a huge fundraising event for this organization, and they have, Angela, do you have 70 items for the silent auction?
Eighty, yeah.
There's a lot of items to bid on, so somewhere around 80 things. So you have, the opportunities you have to come to do that are Friday from 5 to 7, Saturday from 11:30 to 3:00. And then in the evening on Saturday, we have the Festival of Trees Gala, which is a ticketed event. We hope you'll come, eat some wonderful food, and meet with, you know, some other people in the community, and enjoy. We have a lovely woman who's coming to play piano to entertain us, and that's when the silent auction will conclude. So please mark your calendar if you're interested in getting tickets for the gala. We have posters on the door as well as some flyers on the table, and we hope you'll come out, check it out, bring your family. You can bring your dog to come and meet Santa from 3 to 4 on Saturday, so there's a little something for everyone, and we'll hope you'll come out and join us. And again, that's this Friday and Saturday at the barn at Evergreen Memorial Park. And then in two weeks, on December 2, we have the Conifer Christmas Parade. And this is a really special one because it's the 40th anniversary for the parade. So the theme is Throwback to the 80s, Going Back to the Original Parade. So the floats will be decorated with boom boxes and light warmers and headbands and a lot of neon and great 80s music. So please come and join us for that. That's on December 2nd from 11 to 4, right here out on Sutton Road, and it's just sure to be a Christmas parade like none other, so we hope to see you then. Thank you so much. Thanks, Beth. Okay, and now we have Jana and Anastasia from CDOT. They are going to be talking about improvements in the future of Highway 285 and the Kings Valley Interchange.
That's exactly right. Thank you, Shirley. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jana Spikeubrick, and I'm a resident engineer at the Department of Transportation. This is Anastasia Farberoff, and she is the new project manager for the Kings Valley Interchange Project, so she'll be talking with you guys a lot about that, and we'll be covering some other miscellaneous 285 corridor items, so I'll turn it over to Anastasia.
All right. Okay, so just some updates on the Kings Valley and 285 interchange and purpose project. Since our last update, we've completed the alternatives analysis for the project that came up to try and find one that avoids the historical properties in the area. We've selected our preferred alternative, and we're working on getting that alternative up to 30% design by early 2024. We've updated the project cost estimate. Right now, the project cost estimate is $60 million. We've also started working on partnering with Jefferson County for potentially applying for grants for this project. I think at the last update, we've notified Conifer Area Council that this project does not have any construction funding, so we're hoping to apply for federal grants to get federal funding to build this project. This requires us to provide a 20% match. We currently have about $6 million of state funding identified, and we're working to find the other $5 million, so we're competitive in this grant application. This project is also on the CDOT tenure list, which means that it is a priority project, so hopefully as funding becomes available, we'll be at the top of the list to receive this funding. And we're also working with our grants group to complete a cost-benefit analysis, depending on what those numbers look like. If they look good, then we're going to proceed with this application, and we're hoping to be submitting this grant application late this year or early 2024. So Jana will talk a little bit more about the project schedule.
So this slide here is showing kind of a schedule and a timeline of what the project's going to move forward with, if we are funded with this federal grant cycle or if we're not. So option one shows that we are awarded, which we are certainly hopeful for. As Anastasia mentioned, we are submitting that application either at the end of this year or early next year, and we're hoping to have results by spring or early summer of 2024. So if we are awarded those funds, we would immediately start working with our right-of-way group and begin our right-of-way acquisition process and wrap that up in parallel with our final design, and we would be ready for construction in late 2025. If we are not awarded the federal grant this time, what we would do is, once the spring notification hit and we were unsuccessful, we would shelve that project and not commence with any right-of-way acquisition, but continue to proceed, pursuing federal grants or other funding opportunities. So that if we're not funded for construction, we don't have a timeline for construction to start, obviously, so we're hopeful that we'll be very competitive. This is an important project, has a lot of merit to it, so we're very hopeful that we'll be awarded a grant there.
Okay, and then I have some exhibits of what our new project design looks like. So this one is just a 2D one. What's important here is we're showing the historical properties that came up before the, we're working to avoid. So this is just the 2D view, we'll have some 3D exhibits on the next slide, but this is showing that our new preferred alternative is avoiding all of these historical properties. The design is pretty similar to what it was before. 285 will be raised over Kings Valley, going down southbound 285, there'll be a deceleration lane into this loop ramp. That loop ramp will also be used as the on-ramp for southbound 285. And then on the southern side of the intersection, there's going to be an updated frontage road with a separated left turn to help prevent any drivers from going the wrong way up this northbound off-ramp. And then here's a 3D aerial view of the Kings Valley 285 interchange. You can see that the double stop configuration at the northern frontage road is going to be eliminated. Cars are going to be able to pass under 285 to make left turns in and out of Kings Valley, which will help with the safety and delay of the intersection. And this is a preliminary design, as I said, we're still approaching 30% design, so we're missing some final details, and this will be updated with signs and aesthetics as we progress the design. Here's a side elevation view that shows the bridges and the walls a little better. You can see that this is going to help soften some of the grades as you're coming down Richmond Hill into Shavers Crossing as well. This is the view looking towards Denver. We're at like the northern frontage road near the loop ramp. You can also see that there's going to be cable barrier installed in the middle of 285, so that'll help prevent cars from crossing over into oncoming traffic and stop any head-on collisions in the area. And then one more here, so this is on the south side of the intersection, the southern frontage road, looking at the bridge. So this bridge will have some sidewalk underneath it to connect the southern frontage road to the come-and-go in this plaza to the north. And we'll be working with Jefferson County to make sure that the pedestrian improvements here align with their future plans for the area as well.
So this slide is just updating on other things that we have been working on, the corridor, our partners in Region 2 down in the Bailey area, they're working on the Crow Hill safety improvements, so that's underway and will be wrapped up here, I believe, at the end of this year. You might have also noticed here earlier this year that we did a speed limit reduction here at Kings Valley area, so the speed limit has been reduced to 45 miles an hour. And we have also recently completed rumble strips through the median in the area of Kings Valley, and this picture is depicting some of the work that was needed to mill out the asphalt area so that it could actually have the integrity to hold up those rumble strips. So we're thankful we were able to get those improvements in, and I think that wraps it up, but we will be here for afterwards. If you have any questions, please come see us.
You know, you might all ask these guys what you can do to help get that federal funding, because we need it very badly, so we might be able to do something to help. Next, we have Ron Kilgore, our District 2 Director for CORE Electric Cooperative. Ron.
Thank you, Shirley. Well, I've got a lot of great things to chat about tonight, and I will try to make it brief because there's a timer on me, so I'll hurry. So what we're talking about, the first thing we're talking about, last time I was here, we talked a little bit about a trial that was coming up, which was CORE versus XL. This involves a power plant dispute. I've got some news for that. Construction of the new service center, we talked a little bit about that last time. Last time I was here was actually the day of the groundbreaking, so we are moving dirt like mad. A volunteer opportunity, if you are, if you have a nonprofit or an organization that needs volunteers, we can help you, and also rates and reliability, what we all like to talk about. So there's a power plant in Pueblo that CORE and you, as a member of CORE, own 25% of. That power plant has, we felt like, was mismanaged for many years, so a lawsuit was filed, and I'm happy to report that CORE and by extension you, if you're a member of CORE, won the lawsuit and were awarded over $26 million from XL. Now, like every litigation matter, things are never done until they're finally done. XL's planning to appeal, so we don't have the money yet, but we're hoping to get it eventually. So we broke ground about two months ago at a new service center in Pine Junction. That service center will serve the community better because we'll be able to stockpile more resources here. When things go bad, we don't have to go to Sedalia to get our parts, or to Woodland Park to get our parts. We'll have a lot more parts on, in warehouse here in Pine Junction, so instead of an hour to get a new transformer, it could be, you know, 10 minutes. So that's a good thing. So we are moving dirt like mad. Still in the dirt-moving phase. We've got to move several football fields full of dirt out of the way, and that's what's going on right now. Eventually, it's going to have a nice, modern building that will be great for employees, great for the public to come in, pay their bills, interface with CORE there, it'll have heated parking for the trucks. heated parking for the trucks. It's going to be a wonderful facility. CORE also has a volunteer program, so if you have a nonprofit or a volunteer opportunity, you can actually call up CORE and say, hey, I need some help. And they actually pay the employees who volunteer for this. They give them time off during the day, they can come and help you. One example of this that I know we did last year, I think we're going to do it again this year, is the light display at Conifer Community Church. Is a lot of that decoration goes on by volunteers from CORE, including bucket trucks to help the decorations. Rates and reliability, nobody likes to talk about rates. Everybody wants power that's always on and they want it for free. Unfortunately, we can't give you power that's always on and unfortunately, what power we give, which is very reliable, it does cost money. Things will always, in the world of the United States these days, things will always get more expensive. So right now, we're trying to hold rate increases to well below the cost of inflation. That's the goal and I think we're going to be able to do that. The really cool thing about it is we're a co-op, which means every member is part owner. It's a not-for-profit, we're not, nobody's making profit out of your rates. And anything that's excess every year comes back to the members in the way of capital The good thing is, even though we're a large diverse area, mountainous community, one of the hardest places in Colorado to serve electricity to, our rates are competitive, if not lower than our neighbors. We're more competitive, we're cheaper than XL and XL has an awful lot of, almost every pole in their district they can drive right up to and we have to hike to ours. So we're very proud of those rates. It doesn't mean we want them to go up, but we're at the lower tier in Colorado. Also, our reliability is among the best in the state. Again, in a territory that's very difficult to serve because we're in a mountainous community. We have kind of taken all of our wildfire mitigation, this is part of reliability, and we've put it under one umbrella called CORE Protect. And I've spoken with you folks about this before, but it's very high-tech things, satellite viewing with artificial intelligence, drone patrol of our lines. We've got 24-hour camera, artificial intelligence fire watches from some of our towers. And this is all in an effort to, for, to improve fire safety of our communities. So thank you very much. I'll be around afterwards if you have any questions.
Thank you Ron. Ron is also our resident nerd. He runs the computer and that's, he calls himself that, so I'm not saying anything bad, I don't think. Thanks Ron for doing that. Next, we have County Commissioner Leslie Dahlkember. She's going to give a little update about what's going on with Jefferson County. Leslie?
Thank you Shirley.
Thank you. Hi everyone, how are you doing tonight?
Good.
Good, it's good to see you. I'm Leslie Dahlkember, one of your three county commissioners, and I serve on the Board of County Commissioners with Tracy Kraftthar and Andy Kerr. And tonight, I've got a couple of updates for you and I wanted to stick with our wildfire theme and wildfire risk reduction. First, I wanted to share a big thanks with Insurance Commissioner Michael Conway. He spoke recently to the Jeffco Wildfire Commission. We invited him to speak about some of the stakeholder work that you heard about a little bit earlier. And it also gave us an opportunity to share some of the very concerns that we hear from you, our constituents, with the Insurance Commissioner. One of the things that I really appreciate is that he's being very proactive in reaching out to communities through the stakeholder process because we know we've got a couple of years before the fair plan takes effect. And the homeowner's insurance issue is a big one, especially here in our community. If there are ideas, thoughts, questions that you have, please send those our way. You can email us at commish@jeffco.us. I also wanted to share with you that on Tuesday, we heard from the Jeffco Sheriff's Office, they are interested in applying for a $9 million federal grant, which does not count against our Tabor cap, we'll talk about that in just a moment. We're very excited about this opportunity. Commissioners gave the green light to move forward with it. It would provide dollars for enhanced mitigation. It would also help us improve community awareness about wildfire-related concerns and other issues. So we're excited. We think we might hear back as soon as March or sometime in the spring as to whether we will receive those dollars. In addition to that, I wanted to share that, as many of you already know, we've invested about $10 million, a little more than $10 million in dollars to help update the county's CWPP, a recommendation that came out of our Jeffco Wildfire Task Force, as well as defining the wildland urban interface. And what does that look like in Jeffco as we see increased risk, including perhaps bringing down the elevation levels of the wildland urban interface? And I know there was at least one fire chief who said, why isn't all of Jefferson County in the wildland urban interface as well? That also has implications for planning and zoning, growth, development, and more. But one thing we know is that growth and development continues in the wildland urban interface. And our biggest question as we work on issues like Together Jeffco, which I'm sure Heather will talk a little bit more about, is how do we ensure we keep our community safe and we're smart and strategic and thoughtful about that growth? One of the key areas we're also looking at is GIS mapping. That was another recommendation out of the Jeffco Wildfire Task Force. So we can better get our arms around past, present, and future mitigation projects that are underway. A lot of good work being done by our fire rescue districts, Jeffco Open Space, Jefferson Conservation, and other partners, but we want to be even more strategic about that moving forward. One other quick update too, from the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Marnelli had shared with us recently in her report to the Board of County Commissioners, that crime especially related to burglary and motor vehicle theft are down, so thanks to the good work of our deputies on that front. Also, county commissioners recently approved our countywide budget. We're in good shape over the next year, thanks to federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. However, those dollars are no longer available in 2025, so we'll be looking at working with you, our community, on how to prioritize what we expect to be more than $20 million in budget reductions. In part, Jeffco is not debrused, so any dollars, property tax dollars that we collect over our Tabor cap are refunded to you. How many of you received your Tabor check in the mail? Other counties that have not debrused, I'm sorry, that have debrused reinvest those dollars in roads, public safety, infrastructure, and more. And we'd like to have more of an in-depth conversation with you about that as we move forward. Angela, I see that time card and I'm going to wrap up with one last item that is very exciting. As you know, a while back, Jeffco received $1.1 million and that was money that came from the sale of the Denver Broncos. So we have set aside nearly $285,000 for youth activities and that is in addition to the remaining $1.1 million from a $41 million pot overall. But we earmarked funds for various youth-focused initiatives and I wanted to let you know that we set aside $100,000 for the Beaver Ranch Adaptive Playground. We're really excited about this project. This is a big deal. And it gets better because Jeffco Open Space also contributed, and we approved this as well, another $100,000 for the playground from its Conservation Trust Fund. So I wanted to end on a positive note and remind you that if you have any youth activities you'd like to pitch to the Board of County Commissioners out of that $285,000 pot, please send your thoughts and ideas our way. If you need a link on how to do that, again, you can email us at commish@jeffco.us. Thanks so much everyone, it's great to see you too. Lots of great news tonight. Okay, next we have Heather Guthalas. She is the Planning Supervisor of Long Range Planning for Jefferson County Planning and Zoning. And I think she's going to be talking a little bit about Together Jeffco and maybe some other things. Heather?
Thanks Shirley. Yeah, I am going to be talking about Together Jeffco, short-term rental regulations, and development updates. We actually do not have that much in the way of development updates, as you can see from this slide. There are 25 cases on the development case list. However, there, since the last meeting in September, there have been no new pre-amps, no new re-zonings, no new community meetings, no new subdivision plots. There is one new site development plan that I'll talk about tonight. And then also, I know a case of interest is the Shadow Mountain Bike Park. So the Shadow Mountain Bike Park is a special use case. And this slide goes over what the process is for a special use case. The applicant in this case, let's see, I think this is the, maybe I don't have a pointer, maybe I just don't know how to use it. In this case, they are in the formal application submittal referral process stage. And there is additional parts of the process, Planning Commission hearing, Board of County Commissioners, if we are to receive a updated application from them. So they received comments on their initial formal application in June and in December, they will have the deadline to resubmit. There is a potential that they could try to ask for an extension as well, but typically we'd ask for the resubmittal at that point in time. So this slide just shows the Shadow Mountain Bike Park, it's up Shadow Mountain, it's kind of obvious. And it is a special use for the development of a day-use lift-serve bike park on 250 acres. Dylan Monk is the case manager, his information is at the bottom of this slide and also on some of those sheets if you did want to contact him about this case. As I was talking about, there was one new site development plan application. Site development plan applications are applications where the use has been established and now they need to come in and they want, the developer wants to come in and build according to what their zoning is. They have to then show the county that they're meeting all of our architectural, landscaping, transportation, drainage, other design standards. And so this is an application for a site development plan that is in the Conifer Town Center area near the Safeway. And it is just near the, I do have a pointer. It's near the Natural Grocers. And they want to construct a 10,000-square-foot Dollar Tree. It is a use that is allowed, so it would just need to go through our appropriate, like I said, the site design procedures and make sure that they're meeting all of our regulations. One of the things that I did want to talk to you about, as Commissioner Dahlkember mentioned, is the county is going through our Together Jeffco process. In October, we had three outreach meetings and we are, we now have all of those activities online. And I also brought several of them with me today and I will be here at one of the back tables over there. And so you can participate in those same visioning activities that we have had in these other locations throughout the county. Together Jeffco is a process that is updating our comprehensive plan, which looks at land uses for the future, our transportation and mobility plan, our community wildfire protection plan. We're creating an evacuation annex to go with our comprehensive emergency management plan. And then we're also updating our land use regulations. So it is a huge project. We're still very early in the project and we encourage everybody here to get involved in that process so that you can lend your voice to shape the future of Jefferson County. These are, this is the website, what it looks like. Go to TogetherJeffco.com and you can then do some of the activities, participate online, you can tag the map, you can go to the visioning activities, submit a photo. You might get in the comprehensive plan in the end if you have a cool photo. Wouldn't that be neat? Forever in history of Jeffco. Last thing I wanted to talk about was our short-term rental regulation update. And we did have some community meetings in August and September. We've also been working with a third-party vendor so that we can work on monitoring and enforcement once regulations are changed. And our next step is this draft one for review. Exciting news is that we do have a draft that's circulating among staff, our managers, and our county attorney's office right now and in the next couple of weeks. Kind of have a sequential process for that. And crossing my fingers, that it will go out at the beginning of December for review among the community. So sign up there, notify me, Planning and Zoning Regulation Updates, at planning@jeffco.us in order to get a direct email notice when those regulations go out for review. That is everything I have for today. Thank you.
Heather, if you could send me that information and links, we'll get it out in our email list. So you can, it'll be really easy, just click on the link and you can get to the Together website, Together Jeffco website. It's pretty informative and it's kind of cool, so you really need to go and look at that. So next, we have Senator Mark Basely here with us tonight, going to give a little bit of a legislature update. Mark?
Thank you Shirley. Good to see you everyone. My name is Mark Basely, State Senator for the South half of Jefferson County and seven other counties to the south. So I thought what would probably be on most people's minds right now is what happens next with property taxes, right? Because Proposition HH failed at the ballot box a couple of weeks ago, so where do we go from here? So I'm going to start from the beginning, just to kind of get us all on the same level of understanding. Property taxes are a factor of, it is the cumulative mills that, from each property taxing authority, I'll describe those in a moment, times the value of our property. So our property values, this is not a function of government, it's just on June 30 of every even-numbered year, whatever the value of our properties are across the state, that gets nailed down for the next couple of years. So on June 30 of last year, even-numbered year, so in 2022, our property valuations had soared up to where they had never been before, historically high. So that's where it all got pegged. Now, they actually have generally come down since then, a little bit more normalized, but that's what the property valuation was pegged at. So we all got those notices, here's why your property is now valued at, and we all go boop, because we know what's coming next. So the mills are a matter, a function of each of the property taxing authorities, the districts that each of our residents lies in. So your library district, your school district, and fire district, and so on. And for some of these, this is the only way that they can raise money. So fire districts in particular, they can get the approval of the mills, so the two-and-a-half mills that the chief was talking about earlier, that's their source of revenue, their sole source of revenue outside of pancakes. So they do great on pancakes, but it's not enough to make up for it. So they really rely on that. But this, those mills that are all stacked up, times that property value is of course a scary number that we could see 40, 50 in some places, 90% across the state. That could be an increase for people in their property taxes. So what was proposed on the ballot of Proposition HH, it had to be on the ballot because it included a change to the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights. So the proponents of Proposition HH had to come to you and say, here's our formula for addressing this increase of taxation and will affect your taxpayers' bill of rights, specifically your refunds. So the people said, no thank you to that. So now, we go back and a special session has been called by Governor Polis. We will work through the weekend, we will start this Friday, and we'll work Saturday and Sunday, and hopefully not beyond that. But we will address this and what's, the prevailing ideas are pretty much what's in Proposition HH without the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights because we cannot touch that as a legislature, which I am very happy about frankly. But we'll talk about how we might reduce the property values, how, what my favorite idea is to address the specific problem right directly, and that is, let's just put a cap on how high can the property taxation rate go. So I hope we get a smart solution. We'll all be battling, debating, I'm trying to think of a nicer word for it, but arm-wrestling over how we come out. So hopefully we get a good solution, be a lot of good minds together over the next three days, so I'll, we'll talk about it next time. My time is up, but that's my update. Thank you all for coming out today. Thank you all for coming out to me.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, now we have Salvation Army. It's that time of the year. So, Jaclyn Neal is here to talk a little bit about that. And it looks like Bonnie's coming up with her. So, here you go. Oh, you even have music. That was a cell phone.
Thank you. Hi, there, everyone. It's Jaclyn Neal and Donna Beck with Salvation Army in Conifer. I'll give you a little bit of background. I think it started about in the '70s, I believe. If any of you remember the Helgers, they were with the Evergreen Chapter. And then, they broke off and created the Conifer Salvation Army. So, anyway, I've been involved with it since Angela would come to the bank in the '90s and say, "You're signing up to bell ring." So, I've been involved with it that long. But I've been a part of it and the chair since, oh, I don't know, about 10 or 11 years. Anyway, it's near and dear to my heart because we really help a lot of people in Jefferson County, Park County. We get a lot of requests. Let's see, we start bell ringing next Friday, so the day after Thanksgiving. It goes on to Christmas Eve. So, we'll be bell ringing at King Supers. We also have Saturdays at More Lumber and Pine and Dollar General on Saturdays as well. So, anyway, if you can just sign up or if you, you know, would just want to donate, it'd be great. Let me show you a flyer I have. So, here's a flyer. You'll see these up around town. A lot of the local retailers have allowed us to put this virtual kettle. Some will have this kettle, but there's a virtual kettle. So, you can just take your phone and donate that way with our QR code. So, we just want to get the word out because we really do help a lot of people, more so in Park County. Oh, and we have little cards, Angela. I have all my little props here. So, we have these little cards too that we're going to be handing out. We'll have them at the Conifer Christmas Parade also. But one side is a QR code to sign up. The other side is to donate. Thank you, Kristy. I think she's here. Yeah, so she did all those for us. And you can just send into our P.O. box too. But I just wanted to say, you probably get a lot of Salvation Army stuff in the mail. And when that comes in the mail, I think I got one today, that does not go to our local unit. So, what I love about this organization is that 90% of everything that we raise stays right here. We tie 10% back to the headquarters, but everything else stays right here. So, we help lots of people in there. So, if you can donate or, you know, sign up to ring the bells, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm sure they would love to have you sign up tonight or donate tonight. So, they're going to be back here. I would like to introduce our new Conifer High School Principal Greg Munir. Talking about Conifer Lobos, class of 2027. That seems so far off.
Thank you, Shirley. My name is Greg Munir. And yes, we have welcomed the class of 2027 to our building. Those are the freshmen. If you can believe it, the sixth graders are currently the class of 2030. So, time marches on. And as I'm sure you're aware, we are facing a new generation and new learners and lots of things going on. So, we're certainly always welcoming change. And our students are certainly exhibiting all kinds of different characteristics than we have typically seen. And I've been at Conifer for a long time. I've been there since 2000, both as a teacher and assistant principal, and actually dating all the way back to 1997 as a student teacher. So, it's certainly a passion of mine. And it's amazing to see parents of alumni here tonight and parents of current students that I'm sure everyone knows of the accolades at Conifer High School and what an incredible place it is. And so, very thankful to the Coniferary Council for allowing me just a few minutes. And just wanted to congratulate their work on the library. And I know as a community, that is an important thing to all of us. And just so you know, we will be okay. We will certainly still have a library. And we will be redesigning and working with Jefferson County Public Library to make it in a new vision. But we are very excited about the opportunities that the new library will give to the community. So, in the essence of time, I will just run down just a couple of things that I think are important. What am I saying when I say it's a moving target and what we're currently working on? Closing gaps. We certainly have learning gaps with our minority students and students with disabilities. And we're working hard to ensure that we have the same growth out of those groups that we are seeing out of some other demographics. Our social-emotional needs have skyrocketed. I'm sure you've heard this in the news. We are definitely seeing a spike in our students' needs for social and emotional supports. And we are being proactive in that. We have new members, prevention specialists dedicated to crisis situations and ensuring that our students get the accommodations necessary in their time of needs. And very, very proud to say that over the past seven years, we have a 99% graduation rate at Conifer High School, an incredible stat. And there's so many people that go into that stat. But maintaining that is very difficult. And so, lots of different aspects to ensure that our students get that diploma and are able to go on and be successful wherever they choose to end up. And speaking a little bit to this earlier, that new generation and the new term that is being coined as Generation Alpha, I don't know if you've heard that yet. And I know, I'm not sure if that's taken hold everywhere but in the educational world. It's amazing what we're seeing in the differences in our students. They're tech natives, as you know. And so, they, you know, they're not Gen Xers. They were kind of on that cusp. These are tech natives. They're very visual. They're very inclusive. They see the world in a much larger frame than we did when we were younger. And they need stability. They see the instability that they are constantly being fed on social media. And they really thrive on that stability. And so, there's lots of different modifications that we have to make in both as teachers, as administrators, and as running a school building in terms of accommodating a new type of thinker. High School Reimagined, I wanted to include because that really does include you. High School Reimagined is an idea that allows relevance to be built into our curriculum. So, back in the day, we all knew that our Warren Tex, our wood shops, our metal shops, and that kind of thing, always, our kids would jump on that and see the relevance in it. We are trying to establish community partnerships with you. And if you know of ways that we can get students invested in participating in your industry, then that could be anything from digging a ditch with you to working on online research. If you have a need for students and have the ability to incorporate students into any sort of business and industry, we are looking for ways to get kids out of our building and invested in relevant learning. So, a couple of other things there. And in the essence of time, just knowing that the SAT is a moving target. And so, it is really moving towards more of a reasoning test than it is a knowledge test. So, how do you teach those pieces versus those rote pieces of knowledge are really important to us. And math instruction has changed dramatically. We are, I don't know about you, but when I walk into a classroom and I hear students arguing about math, it's like music to my ears. And it's not typical of what we would think about in typical math instruction. Few things that you should know that we have going on, just a few highlighted programs. We have so many opportunities for our students to take rigorous courses. So many end up graduating from Conifer as sophomores in college. And so, they enter college as a sophomore and the credits they earn. Very applicable groups that we run. DECA/OSA is our health... DECA is business, OSA is health organization, and robotics. And that's all those relevance pieces. And we're really proud of what we do there. Multiple international trips that our teachers sponsor. And our kids have those opportunities. And then, our electives programs. While we are a small school at 838, our current enrollment, it is certainly very, very important to us that we remain a comprehensive high school with drama and music and art and those things. And then, our intervention systems and allowing, you know, keeping those 99% walking across the stage. I will skip that in the essence of time. Like Commissioner Dahl Camper left you with a little encouragement. I'm going to leave you with a little word of caution. And so, we are seeing declining enrollment. Basically, what you have here is a chart that looks at the class of entering freshmen in the left-hand column there, the class of 2027. And then, the class graduating in 2023. The red chart there is the deficiency that we would see within our enrollment. So, this year, the actual was 51 choice. And so, we actually made up those 33 and added 18 more. So, that was wonderful. We can maintain all of our staff that way. But if we look at it going into the future, we see declining enrollment significantly with our eighth graders coming in next year at 150 with 191 graduates going out for a deficiency of 41 students. With student-based budgeting, each student certainly affects what we are able to do and offer to our students. So, important that we remain very appealing to those choice-enrolled students. And we certainly are. But it is also a word of caution in terms of what we will be able to do going forward. So, thank you very much. If you have any ideas in terms of getting kids involved, we'd love to talk to you. And I have cards or you can email me. My email address is all over the website. So, thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. This is great. Okay, one last minute here. Stan Harsha with Rotary is here with an announcement. Stan.
Hi, I'm Stan Harsha, President of the Rotary Club of Conifer, Colorado. We do community service projects. We built the Peace Park. We provide food for schoolchildren on weekends. And we do wildfire mitigation. We do all these projects. We have a very exciting project coming up. It's called Mine Fest. So, it's February 17th next year at Our Lady of the Pines on a Saturday. All day, it's going to be a mental health wellness fair, taking care of the brain. It's going to have everything from comfort animals